Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the February eleventh, two thousand and fourteen Carver Board of Selectment Meeting. We have some quiet out there, please. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. All right, little housekeeping before we get into the meat of the agenda. There are openings on the following committees: Bike Path Committee, Business Development Commission, Redevelopment Authority, Carver Cultural Council, Carver Housing Authority, One State Representative, Commission on Disability, the Earth Removal Committee, a Growers' Representative, Finance Committee, Local Housing Partnership Committee, Marcus Atwood Trustees, O-Colony Regional Vote Tech School Committee, and Town Building Study Committee. Please contact the Selectmen's Office for an application. Also, donations to the food pantry can be made at the Council on Aging or the Public Library. Please continue to support that program. There's a lot of folks out there that still need help. Okay. Town Administrator update. We'll get right into it. Mr. Melonowski?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna pass around a document right now which is titled Carver's Board of Selectment Suggested Blogger's Code of Conduct. And I've got a couple more copies here that I'll just leave out here for the audience. Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, since I've been here for a little over a month now, I think as I mentioned last meeting, is I've gone around and met with as many people as I can, as many people that volunteer for committees, and I had multiple conversations with probably every staff member in town, and people from the general public. And one of the issues that's out there that we all know is the politics in this town have some room for improvement. And part of that ties into the civility that positions have taken that may have, or in many cases, have crossed the line of how we should treat, you know, our fellow human being. And I like to simplify this, you know, at the lowest common denominator. And I asked you, you know, when you have your kids in your home for a Sunday dinner, and they're young kids, you know, what do you want them to be when they grow up? And how do you want to guide them? And again, some of the rancor that's happened is probably not what you're telling them how to behave in public. And in essence, what this document is, is this just tries to establish a framework for the Board of Selectmen to kind of adopt and, you know, encourage frank and open constructive conversation. But again, frankness does not mean lack of civility or lack of respect for your fellow human being. And again, it just lays out a couple different suggestions. To kind of summarize those, I think we've seen over the last ten years, when newspapers, who were the first culprits of this, started to have blogging available on their websites in order to drum up business. And those blogging pieces turned into anonymous blogging. And when people don't have to put their name and address on their comments or their email address, is they know, they lose accountability. And they say things that they may not mean. Or they may, you know, they may mean, but they realize they shouldn't have said those. Our papers, for, you know, a good hundred years, for all the letters to the editors, and I don't know if it's exactly a hundred years, I was trying to do a Google search to find out when editorials required your name and, and address in there, but as far as I know, it's been a long time, is in print media, you have to always submit your name and address in order for the document to be printed. And in essence, that's really what this calls for, again, is putting in your name and address. And, you know, if you have something to say, be accountable for it. What happens is, when people don't do that, and you get this trolling going on, and people are trying to, you know, start arguments and posting inflammatory statements, you know, with an intent of provoking readers to respond emotionally, you know, whether it's against their family or them, but basically, it's online harassment, that they thrive over that. And the example that I have at the bottom is, and I did find some of this on the Internet, and I like this quote, so that's why I put it in here, is, when you start to feed the trolls, or you feed this online harassment, it's like wrestling with a pig. So the point is, never wrestle with a pig, because you both get dirty, but the pig likes it, because you're massaging him and playing with him, and he wants you to play with him all the time. But, you know, again, you both get dirty. So, you know, what I'm suggesting here is everyone ignore the anonymous comments, ignore the public attacks. That's the best way to contain them, because if they don't have an audience, if they're not being stroked, they will stop, hopefully, or slow down. And if they continue, I think we, as a community, just need to shut them. And with that, you know, I'm gonna ask any entity and group in town that has a blog site, and including the newspapers, to try to follow this if this is something the Board wants to adopt. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I couldn't agree with you more, Mike. I think, you know, you can have conversations with people, you can have disagreements with people, but if you're gonna go out there and you're gonna call people names and stuff like that, and you're not gonna attach your name to it, I think it's just, you know, it's a cowardly act, is what it is. And it does nothing to help the cohesion of the community. So, I couldn't agree more.
And I'm hoping this is a new point in time, that if the Board adopts this, we can move forward from here and not go back and regurgitate the past anymore. There's been some not-so-nice things that have happened in the past, but let's go forward now and hold everyone accountable.
Sure. Are you looking for a vote on this, for support?
I think it would be appropriate for the Board to take a stand on this.
Why don't we take a vote, and then if anybody has any comments?
I'd like to move that we approve this code of conduct.
We have a motion?
I'll second you.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, concerns, recommendations? Go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to also add to your statement, Mr. Melonowski, that under Mass. General Law two sixty-five, Section forty-three A, it's also criminal harassment to use these sites in a anonymous way to essentially stalk people.
Except for public officials. Anyone elected or appointed to a Board is fair game and is generally exempt from that law.
Right, so what are we adopting this for?
Are you Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I think as Board of Selectmen in this town, I think it goes beyond an anonymous blog. I think that we should have respect for one another, and it goes as far as newsletters, articles in the paper, that if you're gonna print something, that you should contact the person that you're gonna print about, just to make sure you get the whole story straight and the true story, and not just one side. I think that would show more camaraderie amongst the different boards and committees. And I think we have to set the example.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, and it's a form of bullying. And just because adults are doing it, doesn't mean it's not bullying. There is a big discussion going on now with adult bullying, you know, so where is it gonna stop? So at least we can make a suggestion.
All those points are accurate. Enough incidents that could be construed as criminal harassment charges could be filed. It definitely is bullying, and I agree with you, Mrs. Marone, that, you know, and then some of these attacks are done in venues that people can't defend themselves in or respond to answer any of the allegations and stuff. So, I mean, I think we just need to bring it to a halt altogether, so.
I think it would help to make us, as a town, a class act. I mean, you're troubled with getting this bullying thing going. It starts on one side, and then the other side, and then it ends up going duh-duh-duh-duh-duh.
And, you know, Mr. Melonowski hit a very good point. Is this the image we wanna send to our children?
Right.
Because if they perceive that this is acceptable conduct, you know, the incidents in the schools will be multiplied, and right on down the road, it just, you know, so. Having said that, any other comments, questions?
Just one other comment is tied into this, too, is I think that we all have a responsibility that if we see things that are incorrectly stated, that we do go back to those that stated it and ask them to correct the record, provided we give them the proper information. So it almost allows us, and encourages us and others on committees, that, you know, don't encourage misleading, false information if you hear it, address it, and try to have the people, once they understand the facts, hopefully revise their statements. And that's the best way of moving forward, is to have them come back and modify their statements. By no means am I naive enough to think that everyone's willing to do that, because most people cannot, can't accept they made a mistake. But we have a fiduciary responsibility, I believe, to make that effort.
You mean, I have my faults, but being wrong is not one of them? So we would encourage the public to join us, too. We will try and set a better example as a Board, as the Fathers and Sisters of the Leadership of the Community, and we would ask and encourage you to also join us in the same thing. If you have any questions about anything, or concerns, or you think something is, you know, there's allegations floating around or something, by all means, call Mr. Melonowski. And he can certainly answer your questions. Or Elaine, for that matter, she's, Elaine knows more what's going on in the town than the rest of us, so. Okay? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
I hope that's a trend of many unanimous votes. Mr. Chairman, going on to a more exciting topic is financial update. And there's several items that I have in here. The first is that the finance team has received a draft of the FY13 audit from Powers &amp; Sullivan. We reviewed that last week, couple minor tweaks that we saw in there that needed to be adjusted, more from a grammatical standpoint, and a couple, again, minor things. You should have a copy of that later this week, available for you to read. I scheduled an exit conference with Powers &amp; Sullivan for them to come here on the twenty-fifth. And I saw John, oh, John, if you want to invite the finance team to come in as well, the finance committee, then we can have a presentation from, again, Powers &amp; Sullivan on the FY13 audit. I will say that the, you know, I'll let you read it, but my read on reviewing the two audits is that there has been some significant improvement in town, and I don't see any, you know, huge smoking guns and any major findings that they have brought forward. But again, I'll let you read that when it comes out.
Excellent. In line with that, have we already done the request for D.O. audit, come back in?
Yes, that request went in. Again, I don't anticipate that to happen till the fall, just because of their schedule, but you did vote that at the last meeting, and they have moved forward with that. Thank you. Looking at the year-to-date expenses and where we're at, right now, our snow and ice deficit is eighty-six thousand dollars. Again, we've had a lot of snow, and it looks like we're getting another whopper on Thursday.
It's all gonna be rain.
All gonna be raining?
He's praying.
I've got the forecast here from the National Weather Service, and I can tell us what our probability is for six inches or twelve inches or more. And...
We do have a weatherman in our midst, maybe he can enlighten us.
It's the only job in the world where you can be wrong so often and not get fired.
He ain't get paid well.
I mean, having said that, I mean, granted, we've had a lot of snow issues, but we are approaching a hundred thousand dollars. You know, this impacts, you know, what we can put into the capital outlight budget when this, when these numbers come up. But again, Mother Nature calls, and we have to deal with it. Two other budget items that are, that are going over budget directly related to storm is the fire department. We've been staffing during the storm, so we have people in the station that can respond versus people having to drive to the station in a storm in their personal vehicles and then, then respond from there. So there is a small potential overage in that, and again, that's driven by the storms. Same thing applies to police, but as I've also mentioned in our last meeting, is that I have authorized the chief to, you know, spend a little bit more money on surveillance and the detective work because of some of the drug issues, and we've seen some of the results of that. But those are coordinated efforts that do take, you know, additional overtime to track and respond and do the surveillance that's necessary to put together a proper case. Other than that, everything for the budget is, you know, well within where we should be.
I would hope you wouldn't get any complaints on that. Does any of that storm cost storms that we've had, past storms, reimbursable by the state or anything?
I don't believe any of our storms have risen to the level that the, we've had a national declaration of natural disaster.
Of course, or state.
Or state, yeah. So we haven't, I don't anticipate that at this point. Having said that, in the past, the state, when there is, you know, a huge winter storms, and the state has some extra money, sometimes they do reappropriate money back to towns to offset their snow costs. But, you know, that's a, if it happens, it happens. But hopefully it will, but there's no guarantee that it will happen. Next item I have is the North Carver Water District update. There's been meetings pretty much weekly for the last three or four weeks, going through and analyzing the impact of the North Carver Water District, what it's gonna need to continue operation, looking at it over a twenty-year period, looking at revenue growth, or what the examples are for new development coming online, analyzing what our debt service is on that. The long and short of it, and again, I don't wanna regurgitate history, is that we have a plant right now. The fees are covering the operating cost and a little bit more. And as more users come on, then that means more revenue to pay for those fees. So the operation component is funded. What is not funded fully is the debt service. And it's looking anywhere from ten to fourteen years that the town is going to have to subsidize that project. And that will depend upon what year, how much the money is for that. This year, we're looking at a minimum of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. On top of that, in order for the, them to continue to grow and expand, we are gonna have to put in some additional capital cost in building a new storage facility, or an additional storage facility, to allow us to draw water in the evening, in like two AM in the morning when there's no usage, to fill up the tanks that we can then have, you know, satisfy the peak period. Even though it's permitted a hundred thousand gallons, you can't pull a hundred thousand gallons out of there at day one, it's over a day, so you need to have that capacity there. The long and short of it is, again, this project is gonna require some subsidy from the town for some period of time. We're gonna have to accept that, and there is gonna have to be some necessary capital cost to move the project forward. I'll be bringing back more of an update on that in future meetings, but I don't wanna surprise somebody down the road with this.
Michael, I thought I saw a bill in the last warrant where we, we paid someone to put in the additional storage. Has that already been done? In fact, I left a note for you to check to see if it complied with the...
I did not see that note, but what I believe, and I'm speaking off the cuff right here, that's for something that's already been done, I believe. It's not for this new piece that needs to be done, because that's gonna require additional approvals to fund this.
Is that a standpipe that you're talking about?
That is one option right now that's not being what's looked at.
Okay.
When we get into the detail, I mean, there's some advantages of a standpipe, because then it provides gravity for pressure versus mechanical pressure with pumps, but it's also significantly more expensive. We will be analyzing that to determine, you know, is that additional expense worth doing because of the operational and energy usage that it'll pay for itself in five, seven, twelve years? We'll run through that analysis.
And it's also fire safety as well, because it will give the pressure to the fire trucks.
That is possible as well, too, yes. And it will give them additional, you know, water capacity as needed. And that's, that's really why we need some addition, that's not the justification right now. It's really development is justifying the need for the additional capacity. But by having the additional capacity as a benefit of that, you get the additional fire capacity, water capacity for that. Updating our FY15 budget, I've had two meetings with my financial planning advisory group to the Town Administrator, and I wanna share with the Board where we are with revenues and what some of our fixed new expenses are. What we're looking at is about five hundred thousand dollars in our levy growth, which is the two-and-a-half percent, and that is utilized in the maximum levy. We're looking at new growth for just real estate of about sixty-five thousand dollars. And we're looking at net state aid of fifty thousand, so that's six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I may have given this at the last meeting, the six fifteen. However, the fixed expenses continue to go up. I mentioned one of them earlier tonight, and that is the North Carver Water District. Right now, it's at least a hundred and forty thousand dollars. It may go up a little bit more. The second is the Plymouth Retirement, and that right now, town-wide, is gonna have an increase of a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars over last year. Part of that is in relationship to the new actuarian tables that they did to amortize, you know, what the cost is to fund everyone that's eligible within the system. There has been, we're all living longer, and as a result of that, that means more money's gotta be paid out, and that is a cause for, one of the causes for the one-seventy-four, let alone market issues. And then the last item that I have is healthcare. This is at least fifty thousand. It may be more, and we're waiting till March to get those numbers. So we're looking at, you know, at least new fixed cost of three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
Per year.
Well, yes, it will be.
It will be per year.
It will be per year, yep. But just this year, just looking at what our revenue, our new revenue is versus these fixed expenses. Now, keep in mind, this doesn't get into school contracts or cost of living increases and the wage reopeners that we have to do on the town side. This doesn't take into account additional fuel cost and all those things. So my point here is that things are very tight, and I don't see that letting up right now, which, you know, gets into the FY15 budget schedule. And what I'm proposing right now is that I'm looking to have the budget to present to, to the Board on the March twenty-fifth, which is your second meeting in March. And I would suggest that you have a deadline for articles coming in from different people the week, the two weeks before that, which would be March eleventh. I know generally you have it at the end of February, but I'm suggesting March eleventh is, is the date for this year, because we're a little behind. And that, again, that's what I'm looking for, for a schedule. Now, we're gonna be having our discussions with our facilitator coming in, in early March, to talk about the goals and objectives of the Selectmen. But prior to that, as I start to move forward with budget priorities, and, and trying to do, in doing the FY15 budget, you know, a budget is a policy document. It is priorities of the community. What does the community want to spend its limited resources on? Now, ninety-five percent is, is established cost to run police, fire, DPW schools, and it's probably in this town, ninety-nine point nine percent. But having said that, is that, well, since I've been here, there's been this, this big push on drug issues in the community, and I think everyone that I've spoken to has said, no matter what side of the political divide you are, and I'm hoping we don't have political divide going forward, but let's assume we do for right now, is that everyone wants to do something to help better control or to slow down the, the issues that we're having in town. And there's not one little magic pill that, or it's the wrong thing, there's not one magic button that I can push to, to make that all go away. It's gonna be holistic effort on many different levels.
Give it a few years, it may be a magic pill.
Yeah, maybe. But where I'm going with this is, there's, there's been a desire to, to add a detective. There's been a desire to add a resource officer. There's been a desire to talk about adding some type of family support service. All of these things cost money. I had a staff meeting this morning, and, you know, some members are gonna take it upon themselves to look at what are the resources the county, or not the county, but the state or regional cooperative has to start to help the families component, and, and they're gonna look into that. But whether it's one, two, or three positions to help build into the base, to help focus on this, this issue, it's going to have an impact on the rest of the budget. Because as you see from the numbers, there's not a money tree that says, oh, let's hire three people, and we're all happy and satisfied with that. It's gonna have to require some, you know, modifications of the budget, and there's gonna have to be some pain somewhere for this to happen. So as I start the budget process right now, and I'm getting a good handle on what the total finances are and what our fixed costs are, and now I have to start getting into the detail, I'd like some direction from the Selectmen is to, you know, do you want me to incorporate, you know, that into the budget process? And at the end of the day, you know, you're gonna review the final budget, and if you don't like it, you can change it. But, you know, this is an effort. This is not, this is gonna be tough. Do you want me to go through that process? And this is where you, as the policy board, need to give me some direction.
I think that the, the public is crying out for that now. They're concerned about what's been going on, what's been happening to our children and the future of the community. So, you know, myself personally, I can't get into the police-public safety aspect of this, but for the purposes of stimulating a conversation here, I would ask my fellow colleagues up here to express direction that they would like to go in with this, and would he, do you want Mr. Melonowski to concentrate on?
I do, you know, and matter of fact, a few months ago, we tried unsuccessfully to possibly have, you know, an override to add some positions in there. So now we're stuck with trying to do it under the levy with limited resources. But I think from we, you know, Dick and Sarah and I were at that meeting the other night, and it was quite a turnout on it.
Helen was there.
Oh, were you there, Helen? So, sorry about that.
That's okay.
And somehow I missed you, I don't know.
I was actually quiet.
But I think it's necessary that we have to do this. I think this, these positions will benefit the whole town. You know, we need them in the schools. That's, that's the ideal...
I will tell you that back when we had a dare officer, and you have to get the kids young, and you have to impress upon them that, you know, to say no to drugs, I mean, literally and physically say no to drugs, and if they grow up with that indoctrinated them, and then when they get to the high school level, you don't wanna lose them. So it's kinda like a twofold process. And, you know, as we all know, parents, once we get them through high school, they're usually pretty good to go by that time, they're pretty well-informed, you know if they're gonna succumb to peer pressure or they're not gonna succumb to peer pressure. And I think we just had a much better track record back when we even only had one piece of that equation, the dare officer, never mind the school resources officer. So I just throw that information out there for everybody to digest, and, you know, because you, as the community, you're the ones that have to support this. It's coming out of, coming out of our pockets collectively to do this. Is that a priority for us? So I'm hearing from Jack that he thinks it is, and...
Well, I mean, you have a benefit there, but you also have a benefit that the police officers are in the, they're in the schools, and they're the eyes and ears of the community. You know, what, what flow of drugs and stuff are they gonna be able to stop by hearing, you know, what's going on within, not that, not that the drugs, the schools are a drug haven, but, you know, the, you know, primarily the little kids and the teenagers are the, you know, the target of these drug dealers and stuff, so...
The other thing that that tends to eliminate, too, is these shooting incidents. You find in schools where there are armed police officers, that typically doesn't happen. So there's a number of benefits that can be derived from this type of answer to the problem.
But I'll let other...
You all said, Jack?
Yep.
Somebody else wanna jump in? China?
Our role as a government is to protect our town and our community, and I believe that we absolutely should be working towards making this happen. Having a dare officer or a detective isn't the end-all. It's, it's a, it's a big piece of pie that, and we're just gonna be one little piece of the pie to stop the drugs in this town, and we all know it. It all stems from family, you know, just, you know... And we all know it. It all stems from family, you know, just, you know, we all know that there's a lot of different components that are involved with the problems with the drugs. But that's what government's here for, is to protect the community. And I would rather sit and work with you and the finance committee and work on nipping away at these bills that are wasting away at our money that shouldn't be, like a hundred and forty thousand dollars automatically on the North Carver Water District is really zoned in on what the heck is happening, why is this happening? And be able to continue to take care of our town the way we're supposed to. And so, yes, I believe that we should be trying to work out to make that happen.
Dick or Sarah, you want to jump in on this issue?
I'll go first, Sarah.
I just think it's a very complicated issue, and I don't think there's a simple answer. And I want to give everything a lot of thought.
I, I, as, as the majority of our board went to that meeting that the school sponsored a week ago. And I think if you're questioning the fact that we better put some priorities onto the drug problem within our community, you better look again. And they have taken the bull by the horns and started. We don't have a choice. We really have to address this problem. And so I'm saying, we're gonna, there's going to be some pain. And I, I do not want to give up services. When somebody says, well, we got to cut back some hours here and there, and that's going to hurt. But you know what? We watched two kids from our community, young people, die in January. Are we gonna, aren't we going to do something? I mean, we got to do it from a whole bunch of approaches. And we, we had some folks bear their bones at that meeting, some good folks. And Mrs. Forrester was really, she, she really laid it on the line. And, and she, she seems to be a person that's had a big burden on her shoulders. And, you know, we keep, we, as a community, got to try to help. So the priority, we got to support you on this, Mr. Malinowski, I think.
And Mike, I didn't mean to imply that I wasn't supporting ever to, you know, rid the town of drugs. I think it's, it has to have many components. And I'm just not sure myself how to go about that.
By the way, those two people that passed away in January, that's just the tip of the iceberg. We've had a number of other deaths, and we've had a significant number of overdoses where people have been resuscitated by our emergency medical people.
Two this weekend.
And a second chance at life. So, I mean, and you don't see all this in the newspaper. So I'm here to tell you, if you didn't attend that forum the other night, that the problem runs a lot deeper than, you know, what has been portrayed in the media, so. I, I think the gist of what I'm getting from my colleagues is that it, it sounds like that that needs to jump to the top of the priority list. You know, and I know you'll dissect everything and take a look at it and come to us with some proposals. So it's not like anything is being implemented or anything's being cut. We're going to have to make a collective decision on how we want to pursue this.
And Mr. Chairman, I recognize that you can't vote on this.
Yep.
But, you know, this is such an important topic for the town, and it will require multiple different iterations of the budget that's going to, you know, monopolize a lot of our time.
True.
I would like, you know, an official action from the board on this, whatever the motion is, just so, again, I and then those that will report to me, we can work through this policy issue and implement it appropriately. And knowing that whatever we bring forward, you're still going to be reviewing again. But by no means is this an easy exercise to go through.
I would punt this at this opportunity to my vice chairman to make a motion to maybe prioritize this within the budget process.
I'll make a motion that we set this as a goal, a priority, to make every effort to start to develop additional resources available to the police department. I mean, it's not going to happen overnight. It's, we need to start this year.
It may be an incremental change.
About it every year.
Right, it might be an incremental change, but you need to start somewhere, so.
Second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments, concerns, recommendations?
I guess, I thought I heard you say that we couldn't vote on this tonight.
No, the chairman, just because he does work at the police department. And, and the vice chairman's motion was probably a little too specific of just the police department. It's probably adding resources to combat the drug issue in town.
Is it on the agenda that we can vote on this? Does it say action required?
It's, it's kind of a direction at this point. There's no money attached to it.
I don't want to be in violation of the open meeting law, but I think you've got the gist of what, maybe you can put it on the next agenda.
Yeah, we could bring it up under topics not reasonably anticipated and jump to that piece and then jump back.
I withdraw my motion.
Well, there's an opportunity, Jack, down at the bottom. Topics not reasonably anticipated by the chairman.
I'll put my motion back on the floor.
You know, time, time is lives.
It is.
It just takes seconds, so. I think the longer we procrastinate on this stuff, the more problems that are going to develop, so. Is your motion back in?
It is, yes.
Okay, and we had a second by Dick?
Yes, I did. And it, it's, we're doing a supportive motion.
Right.
Yeah, so we're doing, we're not appropriating or doing anything like that. We, we need to see where this is going to have to hurt.
And I think what Michael spelled that out and said he'd be bringing it back to us.
Right.
It's not saying definitely put it into the budget. It's trying to work it into the budget.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments, questions, concerns, recommendations? Hearing none, seen none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post? Four zero zero. Thank you. Okay, sir, let's move on.
Mr. Chairman, the last item I have under the finance section is the financial management policy.
Mm-hmm.
They're all in your packet. Does anybody have a copy of those?
Yes.
Extra copies for the public? Mr. Chairman, we're also meeting with the financial planning advisory group, which consists of a representative, chairman of the board of selectmen, chairman of the school committee, superintendent, town administrator, school business manager, town accountant, two representatives from the finance committee and two representatives from the capital outline committee. Is I put together a proposed town of Carver financial management policies that we've discussed over the last two meetings at, with that group. And this is the consensus document that I put in front of the board of selectmen that focuses on, you know, sound financial planning for the long-term success of Carver. And it, it gives us the roadmap as to how we do our finances going forward. I'm going to call your attention to the center of the page, which is the financial objective. You know, this is, in essence, the meat of the document. It's the financial objective of the board of selectmen to demonstrate sound financial management of Carver's taxpayer resources through earning the highest possible bond rating that includes developing a sustainable townwide budget based on a twenty-year forecast that provides the level of service we can afford within our known projected revenues. Those last two clauses, a level of service we can afford within our known projected revenues is what this is all about. And it's, it's, it's making those policy statements as we go forward. Now, by no means is this a do-all, end-all document. I would look at this as a dynamic document that the town should automatically review every three, four years. But it establishes, you know, several statements that are in here, and I'm going to quickly skim through some of those right now. The first is, again, the twenty-year forecast. What is our revenue? Where are we going? And at what point, you know, do we need to have some modifications to afford the, the services that, that the town anticipates? And that's all based upon putting together a twenty-year forecast. Why the bond rating is so important is the town's going to have to borrow some significant money in the near future. High school, I'm sorry, elementary school, fire station, potentially police station. By having a higher bond rating, it means, means we're bet at credit risk, which means we get a better interest rate. Since these are going to be paid over, you know, twenty-plus years for some of these items, we want to, you know, have the highest bond rating we can, which gives us the lowest interest rate we can. The second item talks about really addressing our issues today, and don't push them off to tomorrow. You're going to hear me talking about thirty-nine million dollars in OPEC liability. Well, that's because no one's addressed it so far. And guess what? We own it. And we can punt it, or we can address it. But putting that aside, because that is one complicated issue, is in any other issues that we deal with in town, we need to be able to, to focus on spending, solving today's problems with today's money. Don't push it to the next generation or to the next year. Item number three talks about focusing on funding ongoing operations with, with operating revenue so that we don't use one-time money to fund operating structures that when we have grants, that unless it's a multi-year grant that's always coming and it's part of a state formula, we don't hire people off of grants because then we're going to have to pay unemployment and, or then hire them back full-time. And that may be something we want to do, but we have to go through the exercise of understanding what that is. This also talks about looking at the life cycle cost of something. So when we're building a building, if we put in a cheap boiler and it's going to blow every five or ten years, you know, versus putting in a quality piece that's going to last a little bit longer, does that mean that the town is better off in the long run for its operational cost? When you add a position, what's the, the healthcare cost? Right now, it's eighteen thousand dollars the town pays for someone with the family plan. You need to incorporate that. Moving on to number four. Number four talks about general stabilization. This is how much we should have in our, our savings account as a town. This is a critical item when it comes to bond rating agencies. This town had a lot more money in its stabilization fund in the past. It has drawn down that one-time revenue to now it's below a million dollars. It needs to get up to about one point six, one point seven million dollars to meet this number. And again, we don't have that money floating around, so we're going to have to have incremental steps to get back to that number. Number five speaks to capital improvements. And for those that own a house, you have to replace the roof every thirty years, if you're lucky. You have to paint the house every fifteen years. When you have a clogged gutter, you better get up there and fix it, or it's going to, you know, leak back into the house. You have to do those infrastructure improvements on your house. The town has to do the same thing. And by not investing back into our equipment, into our buildings, alls we're doing is pushing the liability down the road, and we're throwing good money into bad projects to keep them alive.
Are you reducing the life expectancy of that project?
Exactly. So, you know, this is calls for establishing one fund, not necessarily just a building maintenance fund, but one capital fund that would fund capital outline projects and building projects. So it would pay for the debt service out of this ten percent. The next item, number six, is continuing this one community initiative where the superintendent and the town administrator, you know, collectively try to figure out if there are duplications of services, identify what they are, and see if there are some adjustments that can be made. Maybe that's creating a new department that's jointly managed by the superintendent and the town administrator. This is where you need to look at economies of scales. You can't have three or four people throughout town in different departments doing the same thing. By consolidating them, you hope, and the goal is that you provide better services. And if you're, and that's a win. If you can, you know, reorganize to provide better services to the public, that's a good thing. That's, that's a benefit to everybody. On top of that, if you can reduce services, then you hit a grand slam. I mean, reduce expenditures, then you hit a grand slam. But again, the goal would be to, how can we improve services by looking at where there may be some duplication? Item number seven is really focused on our unfunded liability. Right now, we're at forty-nine point six million dollars for FY fifteen. That's the amount that the town has a liability for all of its existing employees and past employees for healthcare. It's a big number. And again, that number is bigger than what our annual revenues are. We need to address that. Eighth item is, is really focusing on transferring one-time revenue into the capital stabilization fund. So when we do have one-time revenue, that it doesn't go back into the operating base. And then the last item, item number nine, is that the town will identify options to reduce its levy limit. So where I talked about the two and a half percent, we really can't reduce that right now when we have all this outstanding liabilities. So until we can get our house in order, you know, any discussions when trying to reduce taxes off of the two and a half percent is really just pushing the burden to the next generation. We need to solve our problems, and in order to solve the problems, we got to pay for them. And that's what number nine is. And then finally, you know, if, if these are adopted by the board of selectmen, and I hope eventually town meeting, then, you know, next year is that the town administrator will provide, you know, an annual update on where we've come with these, and also for the finance committee to provide an annual update as well. So with that, you know, this is a document, and I did meet with the finance committee on this too. And, you know, I'd appreciate the selectmen's support on this because this becomes the roadmap for doing the budgets in the future.
I make a motion, we approve this policy for discussion purposes.
We have a motion and a second. Comments, questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
Michael, under the first policy statement, and I don't know the answer, so I'm asking you whether that description of what the town administrator needs to do is consistent with what's in the general bylaws? I mean, I think it is, but it's just, I'm just throwing that out there just to make sure.
You talking the second sentence or the first sentence?
Policy statements, number one.
Yeah, number one, the, the whole number one, so.
Well, the, the Town Administrator Act and the bylaws don't speak to preparing a sustainable budget. And they don't speak to preparing a twenty-year forecast. And they don't speak to go towards obtaining and securing the highest possible bond rating. So that first sentence, I don't think it does. I think the second sentence is, is pretty consistent, maybe worded differently.
But this isn't contradictory, I guess that's.
Oh, no, 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 no. It enhances and it provides whoever occupies this seat, direction. And also whoever is elected in your seats, pointed to the finance committee, and even town meeting, if they adopt this townwide direction going forward as to, we need these documents. We need to do planning, more planning. We need to understand what the impacts are of projects so we can figure out how to, you know, I go back to the statement, provide the level of service we can afford within our known projected revenues.
I had a couple more. So under number three A, when you say fund balances, I'm assuming you mean expensive, operating cost funds?
Fund balances is a finance term in municipal finance that focuses on stabilization accounts.
Okay.
So fund balances is anything that's, and Jack can jump on this too.
Yeah.
Anything that's really outside the operating budget, so stabilization fund. It could be an OPEC trust fund that I hope to create at some point.
Special revenue funds.
Right. I just thought that that should be clarified because the way it's written now, it, it implies that we're talking about operating cost funds. And so, so I assumed it was a stabilization fund, but that's not what it says to the ordinary person. It was just a clarification.
It's not as specific as.
I would agree, as you said, for the ordinary person, doesn't understand municipal finance, doesn't know what fund balance means.
And we want town meeting to under, you know, and all of us to be able to understand it. That's all. It was just a clarification.
So I can put in parentheses after that. What did you say, Jack?
Special revenue funds or revolving funds or?
I would just.
I'll just put in stabilization funds.
I would say non-operating.
Non-operating funds, yeah.
And then under three E, it's another little clarification. I'm pretty sure by capital stabilization fund, you mean what's, what we're currently calling our capital building stabilization fund. You want to make it more than just a building stabilization fund. You want to make it so that it includes, you know, roofs and fire trucks and, and everything. As opposed to the stabilization fund.
Correct. I, I would be proposing to have one capital stabilization fund that in essence has two subsets, building fund and capital outline fund. So that those are within the same thing. Out of either one of those. Out of either one of those, debt service can be paid on items that come out of those.
Correct.
So that it's less complicated than I think.
A coming wise, yeah.
That's been put together, which is good. It has advantages to it. I'm trying to simplify that, but still meet the intent of that and build it into policies. There's a lot of good work that was done on doing that.
Right.
I think the personal property is a good thing to roll in because it changes so much every year. But this is a way of trying to simplify that.
So by using the word stabilization though, I just thought it should be more clear that this is not the general stabilization fund.
Correct. And then, if you look at number four, number four would have general stabilization.
No, I got that, yeah. So under number seven, you may have already done this, but I just wanted, if you haven't, to suggest that a conversation with our Plymouth County Treasurer, Tom O'Brien, might be in order as to, you know, where we stand in relation to other communities on the OPEPs. He's pretty good at that.
Jack?
Michael, I was just wondering, did you have a discussion with the school superintendent for number six?
Yes, she is part of the meetings and we've been part of that. I've left a couple of things blank right now, just because I just need to get more clarification, but that can be filled in the number.
I don't think, you know, we have control of the superintendent on the school. I didn't have to, you know, that's why I asked if you had a conversation with her and also if the school committee needs to take a vote on that.
I've asked the superintendent to run this by the school committee and she will be doing that in the future.
Okay.
Dick, you have anything? Yeah, I was just concerned like number five. I know our building study committee put together that building stabilization fund and that was a, it was a great start. It was our, it's a very important step that we need to do to do anything. And I was worried we're going to go into a capital stabilization fund if we're trying to. 10% of our budget would be 3.2 million. But you've assured me that this is over a 20-year period. We're not trying to do this all in a year.
It says the town will work.
Yeah, so I, no, that was, at first I said 10%. But I'm better with that.
And let me just jump on that piece too, because I want to give credit where credit's due. The scheme that was put together to create the building stabilization fund, again, I think it has a lot of positive merits. That gets incorporated in here. It doesn't disappear. The concept doesn't disappear. The first money out of this fund every year has to be for the debt. What you'll come from the buildings. Then whatever the residual is, plus some reserve that you want to have, is what will be left for capital. And over time, as we build this up, it'll hopefully grow. At this point, it's.
This is, this is a little more expansive, expansive and allows us more opportunity and leverage to take care of a number of issues.
Correct, because I think one of the issues where is that in a very short period without doing something like this, there would be no capital outlay money.
Right.
Dick, you all set?
I'm all set.
How long, you have anything?
I read through it. I think it's fantastic.
Did we have a motion on this?
I made a motion.
In a second? Any further comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous?
Good job.
Shut my schedule, all the heck.
You're still, you're still on your honeymoon.
Still rolling. I can't blame anybody for this one, but my tongue.
This is the last meeting he's on his honeymoon.
He still needs to improve on his times though. He has seven to seven forty.
Yeah, seven forty, I should be done. I'm twenty minutes, fifteen minutes past that. I'll try to go quicker now. This is an update, the facilitator for the Board of Selectmen's goals and objectives. We're going to have that meeting on March 6th. It's going to be about four hours. Have it reserved at the school administration building. Each of you in your packet have homework. That homework has a deadline. Not for me. It's for the facilitator. I think there's seven questions he's asking you to respond to. Kindly get that to him as soon as possible. And if you can before the deadline, I know he's taking some vacation the end of the month. So if he can process that before he goes on vacation, he'll be happier. But if you don't get it to the last date, that's fine as well.
Mike, what time is that at?
What time can you make it? The earliest.
The earliest, I will, I can leave a little early that day since it's going to be a four-hour session. So, I mean, I probably could get there by 5:30.
Is that acceptable to everybody?
That's a Monday.
Uh, that's a Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Thursday.
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 March 6th?
Yeah.
No, I think it's a Monday.
It's a Thursday, isn't it?
It's Thursday.
March 6th is a Thursday.
Oh, March 6th.
That's why I asked what time.
I was thinking of February 17th.
At 5:30?
I got a calendar right here.
You are amazing. Do you have the right year?
It's a Thursday. Oh.
Are you serving supper to us too?
Uh, yes, we will have refreshments.
How about dinner? Never mind refreshments. 5:30, geez.
We'll have sandwiches. If we're going to keep you out for four hours and you're going to be being facilitated.
And have homework.
And have homework. The least we can do is get you a sandwich.
So is it 5:30?
5:30, yes.
I'm going to leave early.
All right, got your homework. Next item is through the diligent work of the school superintendent and others, Carver has been invited to apply to the MSBA funding for the Carver Elementary School. In your packet, you have a letter that's addressed to the chairman. It has 37 items, which is the initial compliance certification. That in essence, I'm going to streamline this because it's what, 12 pages, nine pages? Instead of going through all 37, unless you want to do that, is basically what it says is, the MSBA is willing to contribute money to this school. However, you have to follow their rules, non-negotiable. You have to use their forms, non-negotiable. And if you don't do anything, if you don't do either one of those, then they can take their money back and eliminate funding and potentially do some clawback. You have to follow open public meeting. You have to be honest in your information you give them. If something is outside the scope, once they agree to a budget, you own it. So you've got to get your scope and budget done upfront. Let's see. When we, whatever the project is that goes through this effort and, you know, that we'll be studying of the site up 158 and we will be looking at an alternative site at some level to see if something is available, is that the town, if it votes for this project, it doesn't vote on what the percentage is that you have to do. You have to vote on the full amount to have it available. You don't have to spend it all because they're going to be reimbursing it. But when you go to the project, you have to have authorization for the full amount. You don't have to borrow the full amount. And again, you don't have to spend the full amount. But whatever the total project cost is, is what you have to get authorization from town meeting for.
Can we post this online on the town website?
Oh, sure, you can do that.
And the school website perhaps and maybe put a copy on the bulletin board inside?
Let's do it on our website and we can do that.
That way the general public has access to it and maybe put a copy in the, on the bulletin board inside town hall here in case people don't have access to the internet.
You know, so again, from those three statements I made upfront, you know, use their forms, follow their rules, tell the truth. And if you don't do any of the above, they can take their money back.
Yep.
And they take nine pages to say that with 37 sections and some of them are redundant.
But I think the letter says that we've been invited into the MSBA eligibility period.
Correct.
Right.
It says invitation into the eligibility period is not an invitation to feasibility study.
Right, correct.
And it says the town's eligibility period will commence February 12th and conclude on October 2014. First item that requires completion by the town is the initial compliance certification, which is what you're talking about now, which is attached to the letter. It says the ability of the town to complete the preliminary requirement within the 270 days is not a guarantee for an invitation to the MSBA capital pipeline.
Right.
It's quite a bit of work that you have to do before you even get to that. I just think that that needs to be clarified, so like we talked about with the blogs, the wrong information doesn't get out there.
Well, that's why we can post it and if people have any comments or questions, they can raise them at future meetings or.
On page seven, number 30, kind of outlines all the different steps. It's in a text format, but those are all the different, if you will, documents and pieces that'll have to be done over time.
But in order for those to happen, we have to approve this now?
That is correct. So we need to start the process. The school committee has already approved this at their meeting on Monday. So I'm requesting that the Board of Select can authorize me to execute this document and then send it off to the state.
I make a motion to authorize the town administrator to execute the initial compliance certification document.
We have a motion in multiple seconds. Any further comments, questions, concerns?
Mr. Chair, I don't know whether you want to recognize the superintendent, but she's had her hand up.
Liz, did you want to say something, Mike?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand up.
I didn't see your hand up either.
Sorry, I didn't write that down.
Got to stand up.
Thank you, and I do want to point out that we may take 270 days, but we don't have to take 270 days. And most of the items in module one, the eligibility period, the enrollment is done by MSBA, so we don't have to do that. Maintenance and capital planning information, they have everything. I just have to give them the last year that, you know, because we have been involved before. The local vote authorization would be if we needed new money to do feasibility and schematic design. But if we don't need new money to do, we don't have to do that.
If you didn't need the new money, would that be that you were going to be doing the same project that you had done before?
Right, if we decide to, you know, if the Collins Center comes back and says it's entirely feasible to build this on the high school, middle high school site, then we would have to do feasibility. We would need to authorize that money and that's what the vote would be. If they come back and say, not a good idea, go ahead over, you know, your best option's over there. We would, we would, we have done all that work. There's a few things that you have to update, a new well test, things like that. But we didn't spend all of that money, so we have enough money, most likely.
Is this the same document that got approved before or has it changed?
It's changed slightly because we used to have phases. Now they have modules. And we got it, initially, we got an invitation to feasibility last, the last time in 2007. Now, based on the history of, they've done all these projects and completed all these buildings. They found out that it makes sense to establish this, this is a document exchange. Before they invite, so they have a lot of information upfront from us. We're in a little bit different position because we've given them most of these documents. But some of them will be, have to be updated. But the only point I wanted to make, because Michael completely described it accurately, is that it doesn't have to take 270 days, but it may, but we have that whole time. But it, you know, for instance, this isn't due till March 4th, but if you authorize him, then I will ship it off tomorrow. And the second, the school building committee is so, it's so regulated over who has to be on it that that won't take until April 3rd either. So, you know, there are some flexibility, so that's all.
And one other point is, as Liz mentioned, there's been a lot of work she's done on the other project, on the initial filing, that we want to put our best foot forward so we can be reimbursed for some of the costs that were done before that we have not been eligible to reimburse for because we haven't made it to the next step.
Correct.
So we're going to be working on that as well, which will help replenish some of the design money.
And I do think it's a good idea. We post all these documents on town and school website. All of this, the minute it's sent to MSBA, it's all there from the previous project. And we will, I'll put all of that in a folder on the school building committee button on the Carver Public Schools website. But then we'll start the new document vault, so to speak, on the new website. So anyone who wants to read it.
Excellent.
Can. And so the past documents are there too, so you can compare it side by side.
Thank you, Liz. Did anybody, excuse me, anybody have any questions? Liz is here, Dick?
I just want to make comment. I like that we are going to keep this whole process step by step right out in the public so they know where we're going at each step. And it's website and all that, but maybe just a quick update. At both the school committee and our meeting, each meeting, maybe, because there is a lot of, there's a lot of steps on this. And even though you might have one done, maybe you could just say, we just completed this step, or in this step. Then all the folks out there that we're going to ask to vote on it will know where we're at all the time, hopefully.
And the building committee, as soon as it's formed, we will begin to meet. And as we did in the past, all of them will be videotaped. And CCA TV loves to play it. So I know, I realize not everyone has cable TV, but that's just another venue.
Oh, that's great.
But he posted on YouTube too, so if you have a computer, you can.
Absolutely.
You'll watch it on that as well.
Yeah. I know the little kids always say, I saw you on TV, so they watch. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. So we have a motion in a second?
There was a motion.
Second.
Any further comments, questions, concerns, recommendations? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, unanimous?
Thank you.
Do we do the committee?
As the superintendent mentioned, the committee appointment is fairly regulated. And you see in your packet an outline for the committee. And a point that was just made.
Did we skip an item, Mike? I don't mean to interrupt, but.
Does he authorize to create the school committee?
No, do you need a vote on the initial compliance certification?
You just voted on it.
Just voted on it.
Oh, okay, that was impossible this, all right.
That's what we just voted.
Okay.
So the next item here is the creation of the school building committee. Again, it's highly regulated how it's, who the members are or the positions, if you will. And then if you look at the last sentence of the whole document is that, you know, it does require by you creating this committee is that in addition, the school building committee shall provide a quarterly update to the Board of Selectmen. And that can also say a school committee, as well as electronic newsletter that is sent out quarterly to members of the community who express interest in the project. And I think as things go forward, that potentially could be monthly as well.
Further keeping the transparency, this is good.
I move that we appoint, take that recommendation and appoint the school building study committee the way it's prescribed.
School building committee.
School building committee, what did I say?
Not the study committee.
Per the MS.
School building committee.
Per the MSBA.
Per the MSBA's requirement.
We got it now.
Elaine's got that, right, Elaine?
She knows what you mean, Dick.
As prescribed.
You want to authorize the town administrator?
Yes.
Yes, to create, appoint the school building.
Create, yeah.
So again, we're looking at 11 people on here and, you know, there may be a need to add another citizen or two as time goes on, you know, for specific purposes. But this is the general core of the committee to go forward.
Who makes these appointments?
The town administrator, that's what it says. We're authorizing him to.
Correct. And then, under the standard protocol, you have the right to reject any appointments that I make for all, just like all the committees.
So in that vein, should we be appointing you to be the chairman of the committee?
Yeah. We just have to authorize him to create and appoint the school building committee per the MSBA's requirements. Right? I mean, per what's on this piece of paper.
That is correct. You have to authorize the creation of the committee. And these are the positions that are part of the committee. As far as your question is whether I can serve as chairman of the committee, I heard somebody said that I can't. Okay, so we'll address that as we go along. So again, the motion, I think, is presented is what we're looking at.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Further comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, unanimous?
Moving along, same request is for the fire station building committee to create and have me appoint members for the fire station building committee. Proposing seven members at this point. And this will also report back to the Board of Selectmen and provide updates to you as we go forward. We will need to go to and have some funds released this year. We will need to go to, um, and have some funds released this year to start the design process. I'm not necessarily saying we need to go out and do any bonding right now. It may be more beneficial to use some money out of the, the building stabilization fund to actually do some of the design versus borrowing money right now. So that's why I have that in here, is, is one of the, the early objectives, to determine what that needs to be.
You have authorization to borrow money.
I have authorization to borrow money, but, um,
But you don't have authorization to use the money out of the stabilization fund.
Correct. And that would have to go back to town meeting if we wanted to use cash rather than borrowing money.
Yeah, but I mean, if you want to get going now and start, other than that, you're gonna have to wait till whenever town meeting is.
Correct. But we still have to go out and procure, bring in the, you know, designer and go through that whole process, so we're not going to be starting design next, next week.
I understand there may be some opportunities for some fundraising and stuff too, in line with this, so we may be able to defray some of the expenses from the taxpayer, if we're able to do that.
All those options.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town administrator to create and appoint the fire station building committee.
We have a motion and a second. Further comments, questions, concerns, recommendations? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Okay, um, next committee.
Should I, can I make a motion that, uh, we appoint Michael to chairman? I don't think there's any requirements here like there was in the school building.
I think that, I think that should be up, the committees usually elect their chairs. I mean, unless it's got the MSBA.
It's the board's committee, is, if that's what it wants.
Okay.
So Jack, you making a motion?
I'm making a motion that we appoint Michael, uh, as the chairman.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for purposes of discussion.
And that's Michael Melonowski? That's the town administrator?
Right, yeah. Discussion?
You wouldn't want to consider the fire chief as the chair.
Well, he's making the appointment, so I just figured he should be, you know.
I think we get, uh, with the town administrator, we get a very objective
Right.
viewpoint.
We're just loading him up with committee positions.
Well, these are all going to go on his objectives with, uh, with that meeting on March sixth, so
Okay.
he's going to be paying the piper all year with on, on this stuff.
We're getting, he's kind of leading us on so that we can do our homework. It's all right here.
Yeah.
No, he's going to delegate all the committees.
To us. Back to us. Um, all right, we have a motion and a second. Further comment, question, concerns, recommendations? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Four zero zero. I'm going to recuse myself from that.
Okay. OPEB committee, mentioned tonight that we have a thirty-nine million dollar liability. This will look at appointing people with financial experience to take a look at this issue. As one member of the selectmen mentioned, you know, the county's involved in this as well, but, you know, the town has a thirty-nine million dollar liability. We're going to have to solve most, if not all of that. The state eventually will do some reforms, which will lower that money, but I don't see the state giving towns money, because the state has its own OPEB issue. So we really need to get on top of this and have a group of, you know, citizens and, and staff that are willing to devote time in studying this. So, again, I'm requesting the committee to, um, authorize me to create and appoint an OPEB study committee.
If we don't grab the bull by the horns and start making some progress on this, this has the, uh, the ability to impact our bond ratings down the road and everything, so
Yeah, that's what, that's what all OPEB has to be.
Right. And what I like about this is we're developing some plans here. We're getting started on a lot of things, so.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion?
I'll second it.
And we have a second. Further discussion?
There's some brand-new Gaspys that just came out too, so maybe behoove the committee to learn those as well.
Can you get copies of those for us, Jack, and?
I'll get your website. You can go to.
Thanks. Why don't you just print them and give them to me, please?
And I have to go to the website and print them.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Comments, questions? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
And the last new committee is a governance committee, which I have defined here, the purpose is to review the organizational structure of the town government and make recommendations to town meeting on organizational modifications needed to make, to meet current times and improve the way Carver delivers services to the community. As part of the governance committee's ana- analysis, it shall ensure that efficient and effective use of governmental resources are being used and that decisions are based with short and long-term operational financial sta- sustainability in mind to promote a sustainable government that Carver can be proud of. Proposing five members on here, member of the Board of Selectmen, member of the Finance Committee, member of Capital Outlet Committee, and two members from the community with organizational and operational experience. Suggesting that the term of this committee will expire at the conclusion of next year's annual town meeting. However, um, you know, I do think that there are some things that we've talked about, and they may come out at our, at our goals and objectives meetings that are, if you will, low-hanging fruit. Things that people, you know, know in the town need to be looked at and changed. And for those easier things, we should have this committee make some recommendations for this annual town meeting to address some of those items. But the bulk of the work, after you get through those, say, half a dozen items, is going to be, you know, well into, to next year to really take a hard look at the bylaws and, and everything in town.
I make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to create and appoint this committee.
We have a motion and a second. Further comments, questions, concerns, recommendations?
Well, this came up in, in our interviews. He, uh, Michael had created a similar committee in Cohasset and was very effective, so now he's bringing that idea here as well, so.
Well, I think it's a unique opportunity to take a look at all of the, you know, policies and procedures we have in place now and, and identify the way the deficiencies are and where we need to improve things, so you can't do anything but help us, I would imagine.
I think we've been talking about it for quite a while, on, you know, charter commission or something that would look at our formal government and see where we need to upgrade it. Sounds good.
Good change.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous.
Okay, um, let's see. The last thing I have in print is the Route Fifty-Eight Corridor project. This is a project the town has been working on for a while. We just received approval last week to go forward with the right-of-entry agreements and some permanent easements that need to be done for this roadway expansion. There's, it's all either temporary or permanent easements. There's nothing but easements that are needed for here. The problem is, is because of the length of the road and the multiple property owners that are in there, we're going to need about a hundred, um, temporary easements or construction easements and about twenty permanent easements. A permanent easement could be where there needs to be a retaining wall built, and we need to have access in the future to repair that, or if there's a slope that's tied into some of the improvements that we need to have, or that, you know, Mass Highway or the town, we'll need to have access to that. The temporary easements generally fall in the category of, we need a couple extra feet in case the backhoe's out there and he has to back into someone's lawn and pull forward, that they have the right to do that. Anything that's disturbed will be replaced as part of the project. It is the town's sole responsibility to secure all hundred and twenty agreements before the state allows the project to go forward and spend in the tune of, you know, over four million dollars on Carver. Elaine is going to help, and, and not even help, she's going to spearhead this effort. And it's a lot of, uh, we'll have to meet with every individual owner. There's multiple documents that have to be done, and this is also going to be, require an article at town meeting to accept some of these permanent easements. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done to tee this project up. The other piece that I am working on right now is that the purchase, um, street intersection was removed from the project at one point because of funding concerns. I do plan on meeting with our, our Mass Highway, District Five, and, and others to see if there's an opportunity of restoring that intersection. We've gone through the effort of designing it, and we have it all costed out, and we have everything put together. But for three hundred thousand dollars, this is the time to do that, is to put it into as part of the, the project cost. So I'm going to be working on trying to, to get that back in there. It wasn't the original scope. It was taken out for funding reasons, but I have met with Serped last week and understand their issues, and I'm going to try to put it back in.
Now, um, before, when Billy Helenan was here, he was spearheading that. And I thought when he retired, he had planned on coming back and working on it. Have you been consulting with him, or is he not going to do that now?
I know that VHB came in about two weeks ago to set up a meeting, um, and, um, you know, I was there coordinating the meeting with them and John Woods and many other people from Town Hall. I think he was out of town at that meeting.
Okay. So is he going to be involved in, or he isn't?
He's going to be at the meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, because he has a tremendous knowledge of the whole thing. He's been working on it for several years now.
So we will be notifying every resident or landowner up and down the corridor project. We'll have a public meeting set up just for them to go over the project. Um, and, and I, I'm hopeful that we'll get a lot of cooperation, just because this is a good project for the town. You know, a lot of places, we're looking at six inches of dirt, you know, all along the frontage or something like that. It's, uh, but if they, they own a hundred feet of frontage, you know, six inches adds up to a lot.
Well, this is obviously going to be a significant strain on your office, so if there's something that you need that we can assist you with and help you out in getting this done, just let us know.
I will.
Thank you.
I got one other item that's not on the agenda, and that is a MIA. Elaine has secured an additional grant. She's, she's trying to find me all the money trees. So she's gone out and gotten a grant for, uh, for the town for two thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars for personal protection equipment. And again, this comes from our, our MIA loss control grant. It's my understanding that you guys need to approve any grant that you receive, even grants of twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, so I would need approval for that, and we can bring this up under topics not reasonably anticipated, but again, this is to approve a grant for the MIA loss control.
I'm circulating that petition right now.
I'll make a motion that we accept the grant.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further comments, questions, concerns? Okay.
To accept and set up the grant fund.
Copy that. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you.
All right, sir.
I'm done.
I'm done, okay.
You are?
Board of Selectmen comments. Anybody get a volunteer? Shall I pick a volunteer? Jack?
I'm going to go out on a limb. I had mentioned before that, uh, we unsuccessfully tried to put an override question on the ballot, and I'm going to suggest that we put on the next week's, the next meeting's agenda that we have a, um, discussion on placing an override question on to create either one, two, or three positions for the police department because of the drug problem that we have. So if we can put that on the, on the agenda, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Jack. Sarah?
I'm all set, thank you.
Dick?
I wanted to mention to the town administrator, I like the, the format of our meeting. We get our business done early in the meeting. Don't forget, folks, the upcoming holidays, President's Day, Valentine's Day, somebody reminded me, don't forget Valentine's Day Friday.
Order your flowers now.
Chocolate, I think.
Maybe you'll get out of the doghouse.
It was Helen who reminded me.
My scuff reminded him.
Is that it, Dick?
That's it.
Alan?
I'm all set. I just wish everybody Happy Valentine's Day.
And I'll echo that sentiment also. That's all I have from that standpoint. Happy Valentine's Day, folks. Licenses and permits. One-day special alcoholic council on aging, March seventeenth, four P M. to nine P M.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Comments, questions, concerns, recommendations? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. All-alcoholic bartending service from New England, March one, seven P M. to eleven P M.
Motion to approve.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous. And we have Sampson's Pawn, Pond, Norfolk County Bass Anglers on March thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, Sunday with twenty vehicles.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Pending any, we wouldn't have any problems with anything in the past. Anybody have any input?
This is pretty standard. We get the same groups every year. I don't think we've ever had any problems with anybody.
You should check with other towns. It seems a lot of groups want to come to Carver to have their fishing tournament.
Well, not many have as quality a fishing pond as Sampson's.
Right.
So, that's it.
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous. Allstate Bass Anglers on June twenty-one, two thousand and fourteen, is Saturday, and it's only five vehicles.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any further comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous, Elaine. Minutes, January twenty-eighth, twenty fourteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, concerns? Recommendations? Hearing none?
You think Tom Brady might be down here?
Let's hope.
He's in that best buddies thing.
All right. Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We'll resolve the minutes. Okay, the next Board of Selectmen meeting is February twenty-fifth at two thousand and fourteen, seven P M. here at Town Hall. Next up is the public comment period, citizens' participation. And I will just remind everybody that this is not a throw, stone-throwing exercise. If you have something that you would like to contribute to the town government, please come up and take the microphone in. I see Mr. Pratt. The time limit on this is three minutes. I reemphasize that for Mr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for both of those.
You're welcome, Steve. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. Just a few things. First of all, you know, as one of the architects behind the capital building stabilization fund, we always envisioned this as it grew to be able to use for other service, you know, other uses. And, you know, certainly capital equipment, you know, had its certain funding mechanism in place today. And, you know, if it morphs into something else and something better, and we can use personal property, new growth, and other one-time monies to help any of our capital, you know, whether it be building or equipment, you know, that's part of a capital improvement program, which, you know, I think we should adopt as well, so I, I can, definitely concur with that. One of the things that I have been looking at as part of our job on the town building study committee is finding additional revenues. And one of the things that I came across, and I actually have mentioned to Mr. Melonowski, is the fact that the town of Carver does not have the optional meal tax in place today on its restaurants. And, you know, it's thirty-seven cents on a, on a fifty-dollar meal bill, but the majority of our revenue that we could get through this actually would not be mostly Carver residents, because we would get the additional tax revenue from King Richard Sphere, Edoville Railroad, and the state actually has been tracking it for us for the past three years. And, you know, in the past twelve months, sending July, it was about ninety thousand dollars. And, you know, I know we're trying to find some money to help with resources here, and, you know, I'm wondering if that's something we might want to consider going forward. I know it's a tax. I understand that, you know, but if we're talking thirty-seven cents on a fifty-dollar, you know, restaurant bill, it might be worth it for our community, you know, to embrace.
Everything's on the table, Steve.
Okay. And the last thing, you know, is about OPEB, and, you know, we've talked a lot about the liabilities for the pension and with Plymouth County and, and the OPEB liability. And, you know, one of the things we've looked at, you know, is the fact that, you know, we're only funding twenty-five percent of our annual required, required contribution for the retirees, and we've done nothing for their future expenses. for the retirees, and we've done nothing for their future expenses, and we've done zero, less than zero, for our currently active town employees. And, and it's, it's a sizable number. I mean, it's a three and a half million dollar gap.
True.
On an annual basis. But the other thing we, you should consider, too, is that the House, in this session, was debating, you know, House Bill fifty-one, which was to address retiree healthcare expenses. And so that's something we need to perhaps get an update from, from our legislator. Perhaps, you know, Ms. Givens might be able to give us an update as to where that is, and, you know, Mr. Malinowski can find out, too. But that certainly has some future potential of reducing our liability that we have today. So that's all I had.
Thank you for that. All avenues will be explored, trust me. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Kaiser?
I will try to keep it short and simple, but I do have a handout as far as an update. And Chairman and Administrator, the others, and the other co-chairmen, please. The last two copies, or the last two pages are dealing with bylaws. I called the Attorney General's Office, Municipal Law Division, and the lady returned my call. And she basically told me Carver does not have enough bylaws to deal with apartment complexes, whether they're subsidized or otherwise. As you can see, Mr. Chairman, there's a copy just for you.
Oh.
Oh.
I pretended.
Helen, that's conked with that.
I didn't do this.
She aspires to be the chairman.
Slight anybody. I did it because you are the chairman. Rank has its privilege.
She's getting ready for a takeover next year, though.
Oh.
All right. Rich, where are we going with this?
What I'm going to ask now is a gentleman here, Mike asked for this, asked me to do this. There it is. That letter, there's a letter in there signed by five people. That's all I could get.
True.
For the board, the town administrator, to get together and send a letter to the state Board of Inspections, have them come out. As you can see by the list, Mike, this is serious.
I think for the general public's benefit, I don't think you identified yourself first of all.
I'm sorry, Rich Kaiser.
And your address, Rich?
Two A Meadow Brook Way.
Okay. And for those that aren't, or have not been able to follow on as to what this topic is about, it, it's dealing with general living conditions, quality of life issues in our senior complex behind Town Hall. So Mr. Kaiser and some other residents have some concerns. He's addressing them with the board, and we're trying to see if we can't mediate this and get the issues rectified, so.
Is it both senior complexes or just one in particular? Because it's broken into.
It's one in particular.
Yeah.
Okay. And I have about twelve hundred hours into this. If I were attorney, it would cost somebody a lot of money, but I don't know who.
Thank you. Thank God you're not on the Carver clock.
You're a volun, aren't you a volunteer? All our volunteers put in those hours. Talk to the finance committee.
I'm afraid I was volunteered, you know? It's like the, in the army, who wants to volunteer? Everybody else steps back with a dummy.
All right. Moving along.
And anyways, what I'm requesting.
So I just looked at the letter.
Yeah.
This is, gives us enough information for multiple tenants. We'll follow this up and get this off to the state, and I can fill you in as, as, you know, next week is the, and response we get.
Well, we're going to get hit with storms this week, so we have to act on this. We have to act real soon. And I, I had a conversation with Dick earlier tonight about another situation, and I'd like to have a conversation with you privately if I can.
Sure. Yep. And the thing on the town bylaws, your timing couldn't be better because with the creation of this governance committee, this is something that we'll fall right onto this, and, and you'll have a group of people able to address this.
We can't take the chance of something popping up ten or fifteen years down the road and have a similar situation because I know the town is going to have to put in a new apartment complex somewhere. And we might as well address those issues now.
Okay.
If you have any questions for me, I may have left something out, but there's a serious situation that I do want to talk to you.
Okay. I'll make myself available to have a private discussion with you. Mr. Malinowski will work on the other aspect of that.
If, if, one other, one other question here, if it's possible, I'd like to have Mike, you and Dick, and maybe Mr. Malinowski, and Town Council.
Yes.
And I, Dick, we had a, Dick and I have a mutual friend that we met with Sunday. If we could sit down and have a conversation at some point, because I know we won't be breaking the open meeting law if there's just two of you.
Right.
ASAP. And I, it's, it's serious.
All right.
You're concerned with the liability to the town.
Right.
I do, too.
That and other.
Yeah.
That and other issue.
Sure.
I had asked before if you'd meet with Town Council. You haven't met with them yet?
Town Council was on vacation last week, and.
It's a big firm, though.
I think Mr. Malinowski can reach out to them, first of all, telephonically.
And Mr. Franny, I'm asking to be there, too.
Oh, absolutely.
Because.
I don't mind that.
Okay.
I just want to, I just want to make sure that we cover all the bases legally.
I'm not trying to undermine anybody on the board, I just.
You're not undermining me.
Nothing to hide.
Hey, everything's on the table right now.
Love to have you. That's correct. That's right.
Thank you for gathering this.
It's, like I said, I've got an awful lot of time into this, and I, and I hate to see it fall by the wayside, as it were, you know, the political wayside.
We appreciate your efforts, and I hope that the citizens over in that complex appreciate your efforts, too.
I've taken a little flak, but that's okay from some. But they are scared, Mike.
Yeah.
They're, they're tenants at will.
Right.
And all they have to do is complain the wrong way, and they're afraid they're going to be out on their ear.
Okay.
They're scared.
Why don't we, why don't we reserve the rest of this for the private conversation, okay?
I want to thank the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Malinowski, I want to thank you for your time, and I look forward to getting together with you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Roger? No throwing stones, Roger. I'll have to cut you off. Okay. No, no.
I'm here tonight to tell you about the DPW. All right? Forest Street is where I live.
Okay.
Too far.
Would you identify yourself into the microphone?
They know, everybody knows.
What, what's your address?
Too far, Street. Okay? Since it's been snowing from last year to this year, no one has plowed for me there. See, that street from my driveway out is a yellow line, and where Forest Street ended before, from Jawett to where Forest Street ends, it's about a hundred and fifty feet.
Did you talk to the DPW yet?
I talked to him four or five times.
Okay, all right. Mr. Malinowski is now aware of it. The DPW falls under his purview. He's the day-to-day manager of all the town departments. So Mr. Malinowski, have you met Mr. Malinowski?
No.
That's Roger Santos.
Okay. This is what I want to tell you. I have diabetes, I have cancer, I have a doctor that takes care of my, for me, my heart, plus I have neuropathy. Those town trucks go by, throw all the snow into my driveway. If I need an ambulance, ambulance can't get there.
Okay.
You understand?
Yep.
Can't get there. I called John Wood up last week because I do chemo on Wednesdays.
Okay.
And when I called, I called here, down here, and I had my daughter take me for, for chemo because I can't be driving when I have that chemo. I asked them to go down and put some sand in front of my driveway. That's the town's property. You see that island that's out there?
Yeah.
I've been taking care of that for the last twenty-five years. The town don't mow it or nothing. I put all the stones in there, and I do all the work in there. And I feel that since it's been snowing from December, I have a paper here. I want to get paid. You understand? I want to get paid. I got all the dates on it.
I knew there was a bottom line here somewhere.
Bottom line. I'm not working for nothing. You got guys working for the town.
Would you give that to Mr. Malinowski, please?
Right. You got guys working on the town for snow plowing. Wait a minute. You got guys working for the snow plowing.
Roger.
The town.
Roger.
Their contract, their subcontract.
Roger. Sit down, sit down.
Okay?
Now, listen. What I'm going to suggest, okay, is, listen to me, all right? Relax. What I'm going to suggest is that you come in and you speak to Mr. Malinowski, one-on-one, face to face, and we'll get this resolved for you.
No, no, wait a minute.
If there are safety issues or anything else, we'll take care of them.
Wait a minute. When I called downstairs to tell them to come plow and then to sand that, John had told me he don't take no orders from me. He takes the orders from the selectmen. So that's why I'm here tonight.
Okay.
You guys, the one that tell John what to do.
You're absolutely right. And I'm, I'm appointing Mr. Malinowski. I'm delegating to him.
And I want to get paid.
And he will get back to you on this, okay?
Okay.
All right.
And it's going to be snowing, it's going to be snowing in a couple days.
You will get an answer, one way or another. We will get back to you.
I get an answer. Otherwise, the town will be for a lawsuit.
Okay, thank you, Roger.
And like I'm saying, I don't know if you went down there and you checked on the guys that subcontractors?
I did.
Okay, what did you say?
I went to the town accountant's office.
No, they, it's no good.
All right. That's an issue.
They're registered motor vehicle.
That, that's another issue.
Registered motor.
Roger.
They're subcontractors.
Roger.
They got to have commercial plates. Okay. You do what you want. Watch when I put the lawyer on you.
Roger, Mr. Malinowski will be in touch with you, okay?
He ain't going to be in touch with me. Just make sure I come in here.
We're trying to help you.
No, you ain't going to help me. You ain't helping me. They don't plow, they don't, they don't plow.
Listen.
They don't sand.
Listen. You come in here and you ask for something, and I told you we'll take care of it, okay?
I'll pick up my check Thursday, and I hope it ain't here.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Because I'm not only going to stand here, the Internal Revenue will be down here, and all these guys you got plowing, they got no commercial plates.
Roger, Roger.
They cannot plow a subcontractor.